May we live our lives to the fullest with your hand to guide us and your knowledge to protect the work that needs to be done. We pray in your name.
May the law.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Kirk, would you call the floor, please?
Kramer.
Here.
Farmer.
Here.
Gilbert.
Here.
Hicks.
Here.
Krieger.
Here.
Pinkston.
Here.
Ruth.
Here.
We're all here in the C P. Well, that's a very good thing. Uh, next thing on our agenda is the motion to approve the minutes. Ruth, would you please read the motion?
Yes. Just one moment, please. Scroll back to that. Okay, my computer just shut down or just closed the file. Hold on. I move the Schwartz Creek City Council, approve the minutes of the regular council meeting held Monday, April 8th, 2019, to be circulated and placed on file.
Second. Motion is made and seconded. Are there any additions or corrections to be made to the minutes other than one right at the beginning where it says the meeting was called at order at seven zero zero one? It should be seven zero one. One twenty zero. Any other additions or corrections to the minutes? No? All right, then. Um, Madam Kirk, would you call the floor on that motion?
Farmer.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Krieger.
Yes.
Pinkston.
Yes.
Ruth.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
That motion passes. Next thing on business is to approve the agenda for today. Uh, there is one change to the agenda. Um, under Council of Business, uh, there is an approximation to make which all the members of the council have before them to print. Uh, that was just added after we got this out, so, um, what we have to do, other than me having to read that, so.
Eight F.
With the, uh.
Eight F, yes.
Uh, just put it at minus eight F. I'll do that first and then business.
Oh. That's still amended.
Still amended, yeah. Yes. Mr. Kramer, would you read your motion?
Me, ma'am. I move the Schwartz Creek City Council, approve the agenda as amended for the regular council meeting of April 22nd, 2019, to be circulated and placed on file.
Second. Motion being seconded to adopt the amended agenda. Any speaking to the motion? Madam Kirk, would you call the floor, please?
Gilbert.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Krieger.
Yes.
Pinkston.
Yes.
Ruth.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
That motion passes. You will be right long. We have the city manager's report. Mr. Zell, is there anything to add to your report that's printed?
Nothing to add. Senator.
All right. Um, Mr. Farmer, would you read the motion to accept?
Yes, sir. I move the Schwartz Creek City Council, accept the city manager's report of April 22nd, 2019, including reports and communications to be circulated and placed on file.
Second. Motion being seconded. Are there any questions or comments regarding the city manager's report?
Let me get business.
Does that appear to be? So, we're ready to vote.
Hicks.
Yes.
Krieger.
Yes.
Pinkston.
Yes.
Ruth.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
The motion passes. Do we have any other communications that are in here? Anything that are any questions anyone has or comments on any of those?
I like the fact that student council all of a sudden realized they could have a date other than broad sale date, you know? They couldn't, they couldn't do that before, but when you turned them down, all of a sudden they decided, well, maybe they could find another date, so it was nice they considered that.
Yep, it is nice that they considered that. I have questions on the financial reports. Um, first one is page eighty-seven. And just a general question on page eighty-seven. Uh, this is, at the beginning of the page, it's income, I believe, and we got red, uh, figures in red. Does that mean that we got more money in those categories than we expected to get?
That's correct. So did your total balance for revenue expected exceeds what the budget was.
Oh, that's not bad.
Correct. And a lot of that, you can see under building plan and zoning, that, that indicates we've gotten more building permit fees than we anticipated. And for services like that, we receive those fees, then of course we have to carry out inspections and pay those trade folks accordingly. So typically you'll see a corresponding expense increase as well, but that is in fact what it means, that revenue is higher than originally budgeted.
Page ninety-one. Um, debt service for municipal street fund. Um, just wondering why we paid so little on that debt service and whether that's because uh, we make one big payment like for the end of the fiscal year? Is that a deal on that?
Yeah, there's an interest payment in late fall and the principal is payable soon.
Okay. So that we've only paid the interest so far and the principal's coming up?
Correct. And that, that number should end within payers. That, that's a pretty projected number we get, and I don't think it is if at all. It's very seldom, uh, so I expect that to come in where, where it's projected to.
Great. That's the only questions I have. Thank you.
And a few.
Yes, you say.
If the percent of the budget used is more than a hundred percent, what's that mean? For instance.
For an expense.
On page eighty-nine, snow and ice removal, right? Under major.
Yes. Uh, the council adopts a fund budget, and so for those line items, um, we can move some funds around as long as the funder, in some cases, department are okay. So for that line item, it's a sixteen hundred dollar expense and it's over by eight hundred, and that's something we can make up for with, uh, spending under in something like general.
Okay, so how do we?
By ninety-six hundred.
And so when we do adjustments, that's the sort of thing that we do periodically to step on?
Yeah, no. So the budget's still useful as an instrument from that perspective, and then you do see in fact where the money is spent. So the detailed account numbers show for purposes of knowing where we're at now and projecting future budgets that, oh, we might need more in a certain account number, so we have a really good idea of where we're spending money on itself versus equipment. But at the end of the day, if the department, or in this case, the fund is under budget, then we can do those as an end of year budget amendment to ensure that it's still properly, uh, the fund's not in deficit or overspent as it were.
So all the red is usually just indicates something's different than what is, than expected, if she puts it in well.
Well, it's, it's over or under, under, yeah. Um, in excess of what was budgeted. So on the expense side, red is what you think of, and on the revenue side, as the mayor questioned, it, it does indicate positive cash flow in excess.
Okay.
So it's exceeding the parameters of what was voted for recently.
For the.
And we'll probably have one more end of year budget adjustment to be able to actually demonstrate everything that's occurred, uh, but then we'll be using those again as we look into the next fiscal year sessions in May and June for the budget planning workshops.
Thanks.
Speaking of the salt versus equipment, Mr. Svercek told me that he feels that much of our plow equipment is getting worn out. Um, is that going to be something we're going to have to deal with soon? Future budgets to replace those trucks?
Yeah, well, one of my objectives is to have a more predictable fleet management approach. Uh, city, that's one area we still are not very strong on, is that city equipment has typically been, uh, replaced when it appears to have run its course. And generally because we subscribe to the equipment rental fund system, which means if you use a fat cow for an hour, you charge whoever was benefiting, the water department, it's charged for that hour and it goes into equipment rental using the prescribed government rates. So it has worked out. The monies that go into the motor pool fund have been enough to operate, maintain, and replace equipment as needed, uh, but I am advocating a position where we have more detailed replacement sheet or refurbishment sheet to use similar to our capital improvement program so that while it may not be exact, we have a pretty good idea of what streets are going to be rehabilitated or even reconstructed in ten years because of our plans, and then we set our, our budgets accordingly, uh, and our priorities accordingly, and likewise, I'd, I'd like to do that with fleet maintenance because that's something that department hasn't been able to demonstrate a long-term need for at this point. We do have dump trucks that are getting old. Uh, we're considering refurbishing or replacing them, um, but it's not something that's in this current budget. It's going to be certainly revised probably the next month, uh, to begin looking at for the next fiscal year. I can say that we're not in a position to be able to go out and replace multiple dump trucks in a single year.
Yeah, I, I think the approach is wise, that we know that these things are coming up, their equipment's running out, so you gotta start building up your funds so you can afford them, or probably not going to want to cross the deal we got last time or some other city ordered a truck and then didn't take it, so they gave us a real deal on something that does.
That had happened in the early two thousands as well. Two thousand three, we got a dump truck for sixty thousand bucks. Yeah, there.
Doesn't happen a lot, though.
Uh, we're still using it. So, uh, Mr. Svercek's pretty good at finding those deals, but I still think we need to have assistance in place, and a good example I can probably demonstrate for the council is Novi's. I mean, they've got incredible science down to how they look at fleet maintenance and replacement and expansion over time. I'm not advocating we get to that level because we're not as, we don't operate that scale, but something like that that's useful, uh, for maybe a five-year plan, budget plan would be good for folks here in the next year.
Yes, sir.
Uh, just a few things, a couple of comments. Uh, what was, uh, from the reading, like, uh, City Council packet, what was the result from the ExxonMobil Michigan DEQ reaching out to the public?
Right.
The groundwater, the wells?
They haven't delivered any results of what their comment might have been. One of the things they were charged with doing is ascertaining through field survey, interviews, and all due diligence record checks is to see if anybody still had a well in that area. We know of none. There's, uh, no potable water supplies that were where everyone's metered. That doesn't mean someone didn't have a well that was operating as backup or for irrigation or something like that. I just received a copy of the DEQ's proposed ordinance today, and it's a bit more restrictive, so let me back up a step. There's, we don't believe there's any more wells there, and that was part of their outreach to prove that, and if they did find one, then we'd have an issue. And we don't allow wells in the city, neither does the health department, because our whole systems now hasn't access to potable water supply. Uh, but part of the DEQ's concern is if someone did have a well, and even if it was just for irrigation, by drawing down water in one location, you can begin changing how ground, groundwater moves in the general area. So if the state thinks the groundwater by Holland Drive is slowly going west to east, but someone south of there is drawing a lot of water to whatever, run a in-home marijuana business or something, all of a sudden the groundwater might start migrating into an area that hasn't monitored for contamination or, or otherwise known to be at risk. And so they've expanded their due diligence outreach to ensure they have total understanding of all current prior wells they can find and know about, and get public opinion related to their, um, effort to have that water restriction zone put into our ordinance. So we're not in ordinance that says you can't have a well in this district. It is redundant in every element because you can't today. Um, but they haven't actually delivered findings that they might proceed by survey instrument or communications, interviews, things like that. I mean, we did see some of the instruments they were going to use, and they did invite the public to a couple of workshops to explain what's happening. Um, I'm spinning in circles. So I know of no findings, but I haven't actually seen here's the full, you know, yeah, uh, write up of, of their interviews and survey results.
And one more comment.
Yes, sir.
Uh, in reference to safe routes to schools, I think there needs to be a supplemental safety program at the elementary, middle school, and high school level to correspond to, uh, to promote the safety that our, our school crossings, especially Cappy and Fairchild, and especially in the digital age. So I think there should be some supplemental training there in the schools. I remember as a lad, they pummeled away the safety.
That may be something you ought to take up with the school superintendent, because we, as a city, can't tell the schools what happened.
I know, I know.
Any other comments on anything in the packet?
Is the safe routes to school meeting that's tomorrow, is that something that's open to the public, or is that just a meeting for all the people?
That's an orientation meeting between the Safe and Secure Genescy group and staff at the school and myself, at least. So it's not, it's not being set up as a public meeting at this point. I think it's just going to be where they lay out their timeline for how they want to, well, how they want to engage the public on one end and then go about creating the rest of the plan. But there definitely will be more to report than in our next meeting, because that product, we had expected that product to get away by now, so it is a bit behind schedule.
Well, thank you for bringing up open to the public, Mrs. Ruth, and, uh, that reminds me that tomorrow, uh, the Chamber of Commerce luncheon is going to be held at the middle school hosted by the schools, and everyone's invited to attend that.
Yes, can you elaborate on where in the school it is at?
I do not.
It's the tech center.
So you just go in the main door and?
It's the, it's, well, it's the virtual learning site.
Virtual learning.
So if you go in the back way to, um, middle school, you just go off to the left and there's that little road on the east side, the curve's back, you just park right in there. There'll be a sign up.
Okay. Thank you.
Good thing we have someone here who knows how to find things.
She was very active in the chat.
All right, um, we will close this part of the meeting then to the council and the meeting to the public. If anyone has the comments or questions for us, we'd love to hear from you. We'd love to hear from you. Hello? Hello, Steve? Okay, then we will close the public, uh, comments portion of the meeting. This is the first one. We'll have another, uh, opportunity for you to address this later. And we have a mayor proclamation about Law Day. You can just stand here and do it. Whereas Law Day is a day of public acknowledgement of our nation and state's virtue of justice, liberty, and equality under the law, and May 1st has been declared Law Day by the United States Congress. And whereas the American Bar Association has declared the theme for Law Day 2019 as free speech, free press, free society. And whereas this year's theme recognizes the importance of the centennial of Abrams versus United States, in which the concept of the marketplace of ideas first entered American jurisprudence in Justice Oliver Wendell Holmes' famous dissent. And whereas Justice Holmes argued that the ultimate good desire is best reached by free trade in ideas, and that the best test of truth is the power of the thought to get itself accepted in the competition of the market. And whereas the concepts of representative government call on us to understand and protect these rights, to ensure as the U.S. Constitution proposes, the blessings of liberty for ourselves and our posterity. Now therefore, I am David Krieger, Mayor of the City of Schwartz Creek, hereby proclaim May 1st, 2019 as Law Day. I call upon the people of the City of Schwartz Creek to acknowledge the importance of our legal and judicial systems with appropriate ceremonies and activities, and to display the flag of the United States and our state in support of this educational observance. I further encourage schools, businesses, media, religious institutions, civic and service organizations to join members of the bar and bench in commemorating Law Day. To witness that are up, I have here to, here on to set my hand this fine second day of April in the year 2019. Mayor David Krieger. And as it says, we want to display our flag, so if you have not gotten your flag out yet for the year, put it in front of your house, you may want to do that for May 1st. Moving on, we have, yes, uh, council.
Can you sign this?
Sure. Census Committee appointment. And we come down to Mrs. Hicks, but Mrs. Hicks, unfortunately, we don't have a volunteer yet, so.
Okay.
Do we have anyone who would like to volunteer to head this up for the committee for the council, if you would?
Yes, I would. Absolutely.
All right. Mr. Kramer is a volunteer.
There you go. Okay, got it. Is this not sure?
Yes.
All right. Okay. Whereas the city in pursuing certification is, no problem. Under the general operating rules of the council, the mayor, with the advice and consent of council, may appoint temporary committees whose membership may include persons not on council. And whereas such committees must be temporary in nature, have a specific purpose, and include a specific timeframe for their activities. And whereas the federal government shall conduct the census of the community in 2020, and many city revenues, functions, and services are derived from the population and related information gleaned from the census. And whereas the council desires to enable a committee of stakeholders to participate in the federal complete count program as a means to increase participation in the local census. Now therefore be it resolved, the City of Schwartz Creek City Council hereby creates a temporary committee to be referred to as the Schwartz Creek Complete Count Committee for the purpose of organizing the community and affecting participation in the 2020 census. Be it further resolved, the Schwartz Creek Complete Count Committee shall endeavor to complete this task and make a final report of activities to the city council no later than the last regular meeting in December of 2020, and be subsequently dissolved unless otherwise engaged and for the review set at the direction of the city council. Be it further resolved, the leadership of the Schwartz Creek Complete Count Committee shall be composed of the following individual, Dennis W. Kramer. Be it further resolved, the additional membership of the Schwartz Creek Complete Count Committee shall be composed of individuals and organizations as needed and selected by the committee chairperson.
Second. Motion being seconded. Any speaking to this motion?
We have lots of help, sir. We have lots of help.
Staff will be able to assist.
It is.
There's no doubt about that.
Okay.
And I expect there'll be some training opportunities since this is a census program that they're pushing.
Who's they, they're pushing?
Census Bureau. Census Bureau.
United States Census Bureau.
All right, no one's asking for the floor, so I believe that we are ready to vote. Madam Kirk?
Krieger.
Yes.
Pinkston.
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next thing on business is a resolution to approve an incentive program for select properties in the city as part of the redevelopment ready communities initiative. And Mr. W.
Whereas the city in pursuing certification as a redevelopment ready community must demonstrate an ability to provide for site-specific incentives for select redevelopment sites within the city. And whereas specific properties shall be noted in a community economic development strategy as priority sites for redevelopment, and whereas such sites are noted to have function environmental or other deficiencies that makes reuse preservation enhancement financially impractical. And whereas staff is consulted with the C I B planning and the M E D C to compile a set of tools that would most likely, that will be most likely to have a positive impact on repurposing existing sites without compromising public processes, fairness in the treatment, access to incentives, or public services. Now therefore be it resolved, the City of Schwartz Creek City Council hereby creates the Schwartz Creek R R C incentive program, which shall enable consideration of incentives for development projects within the city that meet program criteria. Be it further resolved, the incentive program may include the following incentives. Uh, number one, Michigan Public Act 225 of 1978 Commercial Redevelopment Act. Two, Michigan Public Act 210 of 2005 Commercial Rehabilitation Act. Okay, three, Michigan Public Act 198 of 1974 Plant Rehabilitation and Industrial Development Act. Four, expedited permitting. Five, water and sewer connection fee waivers. Six, tax increment financing assistance. To be further, be it further resolved, the, the city council hereby directs the city staff and the planning commission to develop an objective but flexible set of incentive guidelines that incentivize its, the following. Our, number one, R R C sites. Number two, hospitality, culture, entertainment, and recreation offices. Three, historic preservation and or consideration. Four, build two lines for development, little or no setbacks. Five, outdoor uses. Six, walkable design. Seven, mixed uses. Eight, multiple stories. Nine, total investments and job creation.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Anyone like to speak to the motion?
Just a question.
Go ahead.
Um, Mr. Taylor? Build two, build two lines for development, little or no setbacks?
Yes, it's a planning design term. Uh, setbacks are typically the dis, setbacks are the distance you have as a minimum between a right-of-way or propping line and a building. And so, for example, a typical front yard setback's thirty-five feet. So a house front porch would be thirty-five feet from the sidewalk in Winchester Village. Those are the setbacks for that zoning district. Since most of the redevelopment ready community sites, in fact, all of them at this point are downtown, one of the items to be incentivized, not required at this point, would be a build two line, meaning you actually build up to the right-of-way or within five feet to it, so that infill development or expansions would look more like traditional downtown buildings than a contemporary culvers or whatever might be built. And so one of the items that our economic development strategy is reporting to do, of course, have a walkable, traditional or early pre-World War II designed downtown, multiple stories, residential but commercial, uh, buildings build to the right-of-way line or within a certain distance of it, bike racks, public art, outdoor dining, all those attributes that make the downtown diverse, vibrant, has some culture, a lot of hospitality, things like that. So it's part of that whole puzzle that's described in those nine attributes that are incentivized, again, not required, but those people that can achieve more of those, uh, desires. again, not required, but those people that can achieve more of those, uh, desires and get more incentives presumably out of those policies once they become drafted. That's the idea. Provide more of these things, get more incentives, and then the policy that will be crafted by the planning commission will lay out how that's done in a way that's predictable and fair.
Nice.
Uh, so, I went a bit beyond the design, sure, much more of a build two line, I guess it is. Thank you. It's supposed to pull you in closer.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anyone else? I believe we're ready to vote, Madam Clerk.
Payston.
Yes.
Ruth.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Krieger.
Yes. That motion passes. Our next resolution is to approve professional services engagement letters for general and special services. And this, uh, not just for services, audit services. Please, Brad, now, I was going to suggest that we need to put in what kind of services apply. I think so, if you could read that.
Whereas section eight, one, three of the city charter requires an audit of all accounts of the city government, and whereas the city desires an independent and professional audit of financial statements and compliance and according counting principles generally accepted in the United States of America, G A A P, and whereas independent auditors, Plant Moran P L L C, chosen by the city for a qualified bidding selection process, has submitted an engagement letter dated March 2nd, ninth, 2019, perform auditing services related to the city's general fund, public utilities, enterprise accounts, downtown development authority, Act 51 monies, and G A S B 75 newly mandated other post-deployment benefit audit. And whereas the city council finds the services of Plant Moran P L L C to be sufficient and competitively priced, while therefore be it resolved that the City of Schwartz Creek City Council accepts the engagement letter for general and G S, G A S B 75 audit services as submitted by Plant Moran P L L C and the amount of twenty-five thousand one hundred general and thirty-five hundred G A S B 75 and necessary and reasonable travel and out-of-pocket expenses for the noted services. Be it further resolved that the City Council directs the city manager to execute said engagement letters in behalf of the city.
Second.
Motion's made in seconded. Comments?
Yes.
Questions?
That additional G, G A S B 75 audit fee is, correct me if I'm wrong, twenty-five thousand one hundred dollars?
No, the additional, it's G A S B, and that's, you'll hear the auditors and treasurer use that term now in the council.
Oh, I'm sorry. Three thousand five hundred.
Yes, thirty, thirty-five hundred dollars, uh, and that's not something that should need to be performed and, or audited in subsequent to build each year, to the extent that they're noting it for this year. It is a new auditing requirement.
Yes.
The reason this is in there is because most cities in Michigan have not adequately funded that sort of thing for the, uh, post-employment benefits of the workers. Uh, Schwartz Creek has adequately funded it, we are in a good position, but because most cities have not, and the state is ending up having to pick up the funds that the cities don't provide to fulfill the contracted obligations that are workers when they retire, they've put this in to make sure everybody comes up with the money. Well, we're not one of those cities, but we still have to pay to the FBI audit on the show that we're okay.
That was, thanks for answering my question.
Other questions? All right, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Ruth.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Krieger.
Yes.
Payston.
Yes.
That motion passes. We're moving right along quite quickly tonight. Uh, resolution to assess delinquent charges for water, sewer, and weeds. And back to you, Mrs. Ruth, if you would.
Whereas the city by virtue of enforcing certain ordinances and charter provisions incurs expenses related to the improvement, maintenance, and or replacement of private and public property, and whereas the city also provides utility services of which some recipients of said services have outstanding and overdue balances related to the same, and whereas the city's ordinances related to the provision of water and sewer services, as well as those pertaining to the maintenance of sidewalks and noxious weeds, provide for the collection of expenses and related fees, and whereas such outstanding expenses, service charges, and fees are able to be assessed to real property per chapter ten of the city charter. Now therefore be it resolved, the City of Schwartz Creek directs the treasurer to prepare an audit of all outstanding debts owed to the city for delinquent water, sewer, mowing, sidewalk repairs, and sidewalk snow removal, and further to cause such debts to be assessed against the property owner of record in accordance with the city ordinance of state statute, said debts to be placed against the summer 2019 tax collection.
Second.
Motion made in seconded. Any speaking to the motion? Any speaking to the debts? I noticed that, uh, one of the, a couple of the debts that are owed, uh, sewer and water, one and these is for the Greens, and Mrs. Green passed away several years ago. Mr. Green has left the area, I believe, and no one seems to be able to locate him. I'm suspecting that property is going to end up in the land bank and come back to the city.
Seems to be the, the logical outcome, however, it hasn't happened yet, and this has been yet.
Yep.
It must be paying, we can't see when delinquent taxes, including assessments, are paid once they're turned over to the county. Presumably, that's been occurring.
Okay.
Which is very odd, because no other maintenance or care goes into that property. Motion.
Yes. That building, the roof on it is really bad, and if they don't, if somebody don't do something for it pretty quick with it, there won't be nothing there to fix.
Yeah, we've got, we've obviously got building cases open on it as well. Um, we could probably pursue it to the point where we go on there at our expense and do proper care of, at least the roof.
It needs a whole roof put on it.
And then we would be looking at, assessing that cost to the property, if presumably it was unpaid, uh, and then, and you'd have it be turned over to the land bank where we probably would not get reimbursed for it. So we may have to talk about that coming up, as to, this property should be demoed, or if we do want to go in there and put public resources that are preserving it, with the understanding we might not be repaid for it, which is fine, I mean, it's council decision, but, um, we're there. That's, doesn't have much life left in it if somebody doesn't go in there and at least re-roof it.
Are they paying the taxes on it?
They said they, if it doesn't go to the land bank, we're fast-track county for that type of thing, eighteen months typically.
Yeah. About two years it's on the, on the list.
Yeah, so somebody must be paying the taxes by the time it's getting to the county, and then we don't see the receipts for that. So what happens, if someone owes the city a dollar for all taxes, uh, and they don't pay it, and we turn that over to the county treasurer, they make us whole, uh, and then they may or may not get paid subsequent to that as they start pursuing the tax foreclosure process. And so, I can't see if there's a note on it or debt at which at some point a bank or other institution's choosing to pay it, um, or if the individual decides that despite not putting any other care into it, not paying the taxes in front, they still do it later on penalty. Uh, we can try and make some inquiries and see what we come up with, but, uh, the property's been in this situation and deteriorating for, I don't know how many years, I really don't.
I notice, you know, the, the city hoes their, hoes that all the time. You meant, would you been getting paid for it?
No.
No. That's why it's on the list, John, because we're not getting paid for it.
Well, I just wondered in previous years, if, because it's been a lot of years that's been like that.
I'm not going to say they never paid bill.
Well, the deadline is two, like, what's on there now, like, September 30th, I think it was cut off? So we're talking about anything that was for services from September 30th of 2018 and before. So not like October, November, assuming you got that.
Yeah.
That's timeframe. That's a cutoff every year.
Okay.
So they probably owe more than that even, it's just that that's the cutoff, and that's what's going to a tax, to tax though.
Where is the physical location of this property? Grove Street and Morris, Green Photography, where it used to be.
Okay. It's next door to the lot that's owned by the city where we, um, don't, we're shipping and stuff.
And, um, a lot of people have made inquiries, and we attempt to connect them as best we can to the last known address of the owner. I, I can only speculate. I think there's, I, if I had to guess, I'd say there's a sentimental attachment or something to that property. Could be anything.
He used to live on Morris Road down, almost to Red Road.
Yeah, and his, his life turned upside down ten years ago or eleven years ago, quickly. And so, it's, it's, it's sort of a personal mystery what happened there, but from our perspective, we have property that's not going into tax foreclosure, which is, in a way, a solution to the blank deterioration, uh, but also not recovering or getting any care, unable to recover costs at this point otherwise. So, we're pursuing the building code violations, eventually we will end up in front of a judge to get a court order that enables us to go in there and make repairs, or hold them in contempt, or whatever they choose to do, uh, assuming they show. And so, we might be back putting options in front of the council for, maybe we can proceed to rehab it, uh, with understanding that we might not be in a position to recover those assessments, or we might be back, like we've seen with other properties, uh, with the county treasurer's office, making that available to the city for a purchase for the proposed value.
Mr. Farmer.
If we were to take that to the court and look at potential repairs, are we able to assess the building to determine if repairs are acceptable?
You mean, yeah.
Or if we should.
You mean inspect them or what? Are you using assessing in terms of?
Sorry.
Inspect.
Yes, inspect.
Yeah, to assess a property, in this instance, we've been talking about is to take the tax or charges and fees owed for something that was necessary and place that as a burden or lien on the tax bill of property. That's the process, chapter ten calls assessing. That was my, my momentary opinion, yes.
Inspect.
Uh, we can inspect to the extent that the public has the ability to do so, uh, meaning any member of the public has the ability to park in the parking lot, uh, visually look at the property. We can do that. If it's hazardous, we can elevate it to another level. At this point, we haven't had access to the inside, it's secure, as far as I can tell.
It is a fairly small building. I don't know how much the building would be worth if it were sold, even if we didn't put a roof on it, so that would be part of our consideration, I think.
If I had to guess, I'd say it should probably be razed, scraped, or destroyed at this point. I could be wrong, it could just, I mean, yeah, it would be, it's based on the circumstances there, but given how many years it's been making, the extent of interior damage, I'd be shocked if something else hadn't happened on the inside to compromise the safety of it in a way that's just not worth paying your way out of it.
Well, what would be more appealing to a potential buyer? If that land was just grass, or if they had to deal with what is there? I can't say at this point. But we could look into that further.
Oh, yeah.
One that I can.
Mr.?
You know, the, that building puts the Gaines Township Hall, their offices, before the city.
Really?
And I can remember, I can remember voting there. And that building is built out of the same material that the Gaines, the Village of Gaines office is built out of. It's, it's like a red clay block underneath that site.
Interesting. So maybe it's in better shape for that.
I mean, it was a solid building, it just, you let the roof go on it and it just messes them up.
So in the, in my report, I'll include where we're at in the due process of our building code violations. So I don't know if we have a court date yet or not.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert, for, uh, educating us on the history of that and what it's actually made of, because we would not know if you didn't remember that.
Yeah, I voted there before.
Just have a question, uh.
Before they built the Township Hall on Grand Lake, uh, seven, almost, almost seventy-two.
You're old.
All right. I've forgotten who we are on this. Assessments, yes, I think we're ready to vote.
Kramer.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Krieger.
Yes.
Payston.
Yes.
Ruth.
Yes.
And that passes.
Down to our last item to use, the color one. Mr. Kramer, would you like to read the renewed and, uh, brought back to us applicant?
Revised. Absolutely. Uh, whereas Schwartz Creek Community Schools is a recognized not-for-profit entity that operates in Schwartz Creek, and whereas Schwartz Creek High School Student Council proposes a five K color one road race that will be centered in Winchester Village on Saturday, May 18th, 2019, beginning at 5:00 PM. And whereas the city council finds this organization and the event to be beneficial to the public and in good standing, and whereas the Metro Police Department of Genesee County has reviewed and mysteriously approved street usage for this event, now therefore be it resolved that the City of Schwartz Creek hereby approves application for street usage permit to conduct a five kilometer foot road race on Saturday, May 18th, 2019, 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Applicant, the Schwartz Creek High School Student Council, as represented by Schwartz Creek Community School District, in the care of Principal Kitchen, race to be held in Winchester Village subdivision in accordance with the application submitted under the direction and control of the Chief of Police, constituted upon the provision of valid insurance listing in the City of Schwartz Creek as an additionally insured party.
Motion made in seconded. Uh, in our packet, we have a copy of the insurance binder that they've provided us, showing that they are insured for that. Any comments or questions? We change your data, might be easier for them to get it passed this week than it was last time. All right, Madam Clerk, we are ready to vote.
Farmer.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Krieger.
Yes.
Payston.
Yes.
Ruth.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
That motion passes. And that concludes our business for this evening. Open again to the public. Anybody think of anything they'd like to share with the council? Last call. All right. We're going to move on to comments by council members. And we'll start with, with Ms. Ruth again.
Uh, I don't have any comments, I don't think, so.
All right. Mr. Kramer.
Uh, yes, uh, the, um, recent art show at the art gallery was, uh, I think, a big success, and saw a lot of great artworks last Saturday, uh, during the event, a lot of good people there, sharing a lot of good ideas.
And it's still going on, so you can still see it?
Yes, yes, that was the K-pop, K-pop event. And, uh, we're having, um... And, uh, we're having, um, a tribute to Elvis, um, at American Legion, uh, this Saturday, I think it's this Saturday, yeah. And, uh, uh, it's a fundraiser for our organization, uh, the Legion. And also periodically I do make comments on, uh, bring concerns up from the community and, uh, true reform. There was a, uh, constituent of mine wanted to bring up the idea of a, uh, a restaurant permanent site on the, I guess it'd be the north side of Abrams Park, where we temporarily have a porta potty there, and a constituent wanted to bring up that idea to the council today. And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Farmer?
Beautiful day, I'm excited to see what good things are to come.
I'll tell you what good things are to come. More are you along this week.
Yeah.
Because the grass is growing up crazy. Mrs. Hicks?
Um, I had a person today that, uh, that was during a gathering, and they were upset over the fact that we had turned down the color run, and I said, but we discussed it, we had questions, there was nobody there to answer questions, and I just think it would be nice if, I mean, if nonprofit organizations, if they're coming before the council, or some sort of special consideration, or permits, anything, including women's club, I know that, um, hometown days will show up in case we have questions, I think it would be nice if we encouraged them to attend the meeting where the motion is, so in case we have questions, we're able to discuss it, so it doesn't seem like we're making decisions for these organizations without really discussing what was going on. So I just wanted to bring that up and encourage any of them, when they're asking for, you know, road permits, parades, whatever, if they would show up here, so that we could, you know, have face-to-faces, instead of it sounding like we're just arbitrarily not, you know, doing that. So I think that's, would be nice if they would do that.
Agreed.
Mr. Gilbert?
Yes. Gain, the Genesee County Auto Theft Invictus Association Network, they had a meeting today, and I attended, and for the month of Oc, now this is for two thousand eighteen, the month of October, November, and December, they had a total of one million four, four thousand dollars, they recovered vehicles, they recovered cash, whatever, from, okay, and then, uh, January, February, and March, they had a total of five hundred and eighty-three thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. And that was for the vehicles, the money received, uh, parts. And it has a grand total here of one million five hundred and eighty-seven thousand four hundred and fifty dollars they recovered, worth of material.
These are samples.
So, I, I have a question. What, 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 how much do we pay them a year in dues?
I don't think we pay anything to Gain.
But they said they have dues.
I don't think that's, the city doesn't pay anything directly on that, how we do for Fang.
Maybe it's.
Not if Metro P D participates.
It might be.
Or if you're representing municipality that isn't contributing, is a possibility. I'll check with Chief Babe.
Okay.
See what our status is, and then report back.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
And welcome spring. That's it. Seven weeks in.
Another history lesson, since I'm older, John.
War.
The, the townhouses that are supposed to go in across from the memorial of Margaret Brewer, first female general, Marines.
Marine Corps.
Uh, grew up in Schwartz Creek and attended Rhino School.
Yes.
And the Rhino School burned down somewhere between the time I graduated until I bought the property where the, where the hospital is now, and there was a pump well out there where the big stone is, and while we were building, people would come and get water because Schwartz Creek has some shitty water, the salt wells, and, and the people in Winchester Village had good water, because it came from the gravel bit, it changed, but the rest of the city, oh my God, this, this had to be the worst water anywhere around, and it really slowed the development of Schwartz Creek down, because they didn't have city water back then, you had to drill a well, and the wells were bad, but people would beg us to not close that, that, that pump up, but we had to tap into that for water for the clinic, so we didn't have to drill another well. And we had an outside spigot there for people to, you know, we'd while along, and for years people would come in there, I don't know when Schwartz Creek City, the rest of the city finally got city water, but for a long time people would come out there and get their drinks and water, and cooking water at the clinic.
Wow.
Rhino School, I, I gotta, I donate the picture of, um, Margaret Newman gave me, that's in the Historical Society, but T W Perkins told me that, that talked about discrimination, he attended that school, and he said, there was thirteen kids there, six white kids and seven Native Americans, he says, talk about getting the shit kicked out of you, he said, every day, he said, those kids that, that came off the Papal Farm were so tough, they, I mean, they worked from the time they were little kids, and he said, that was terrible, he hated going to school there, he didn't want to go to school, he was glad when they finally got into Mary Creepel. History left to number two.
Mark, is, um, Mrs. Brewer's?
Is that three years?
No, all, all the same. Question.
Is it Mrs. Brewer still alive?
No.
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 She would've grown up on the farm on, on Bristol Road, next to Bush's Farm, it's on Bristol, uh, west of Moorish. On the, on the north side of the road was, the town brewer was the person that had, when we moved to town.
Are we gonna have some sort of, uh, commemorative plaque or something, with these units going in?
There isn't one plan, I've been trying to ask the town if we can actually contact the family to see if it's something that'd be desirable, uh, because it's a commercial project, I mean, it's a community effort to try to create some activity there, and it makes sense if it better than the memorial.
Yeah.
Maybe they don't, I mean, it's just choice, but I can't, I don't have a plan on it, maybe someone else does, but there's no plan.
There'll be a plan.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know.
I, if you know something, then if you don't, we'll be back.
What?
You wanna play different?
No, not, not related, the Donnie Brewer, that was part of the grant, different family.
Okay. Eric's comments. Um, I'm happy that spring is coming too, and along with spring coming, we have hometown days coming, and leading up to home holidays, and at home holidays, there's gonna be a contest, and the contest is going to be, uh, about who is the most popular person in the city, and, uh, there are five people in leadership positions who are engaged in that contest, the mayor, Mr. Zell, uh, and Micah, the school superintendent, police chief, Matt Babe, and fire chief, Dave Plum, and there are going to be jars around the city for you to put money in, and whoever jar gets the most money gets the opportunity to kiss the goat at hometown day.
The opportunity to kiss the goat?
I want to, I want to encourage everyone to put money to that Micah's jar.
Yeah, like, I got a feeling, I got a feeling, I wouldn't have agreed to do it if there wasn't a police chief and school superintendent, there's no way, no guy.
I don't know.
He's got a YouTube channel or whatever.
He's lost the more than one.
Yes, okay. Did city council ever, or, I mean, did, did hometown days committee ever come to the city council?
For their permits?
Yeah.
They, they've submitted them, uh, just last week, they'll be getting mixed council pad.
Okay.
Yeah.
I thought, well, you'd say.
I thought you were gonna ask if, uh, the game were asking if the mayor or the city manager could kiss the goat.
No. They, they did that same thing when I was on the school board, I was vice president of the J C's, I was president of the, of Schwartz Creek Chamber Commerce, the first one, I was on the school board, and they had that thing, and I won it, and all I got was a sheet of paper saying, you were the most popular guy in the school district, it was a school district then.
Did you have to kiss the goat?
Huh?
Did you have to kiss the goat?
No, but I didn't, it wasn't much of an honor, believe me. Unless they give you a new car, I, I don't think it's probably worthwhile to campaign for it.
Where can the voting jars be, and when? Um, there'll, Sandy was going around today to get the last, it'll be businesses, remember when they had the baby and you voted for the baby? It'll be the same sort of thing.
Baby, maybe a coffee shot?
Fire's had coffee, it's great, nobody, we haven't heard from anyone, but we have to, uh, have to vote in there for theirs. All right, I'll just let Sandy know. They had some interesting comments when they were asked about doing it, and so they might even be putting the comments as the main, and I think it was Chief Babe that said, will you be providing, um, wipes or whatever if you kiss the goat? It's very interesting comments, and it really, oh, had.
Okay. And, and, um, junction roots, I think your comments, I believe that Dr. Kingston has probably kissed a few goats in his plan.
I'd like to make a motion on adjourned.
Second.
That motion made a second, on the favor, say yes?
Yes.
You're adjourned.
Yeah.
You don't want your folks hurt.